Great. All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Actually, Mayor, if you don't mind, we're going to go ahead and do the
The script?
teleconferencing, yeah, item first.
That's fine.
Great, thank you. So I just want to make it clear for the record that Mayor Haskell is attending remotely, and this meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Brown Act's teleconferencing rules. Mayor Haskell is participating from the Warren Street Hotel, 86 Warren Street, Room 708, New York, New York, via Zoom webinar. And in accordance with the Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And I also want to note for the record that we have a quorum of councilmembers present here in person. Mayor Haskell, can you hear me okay?
I can.
And were you able to hear the proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes, I have.
Great, and do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
And have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes, I have.
Great, and is your location accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
And is there any member of the public there with you now?
Not right now, no.
Okay. I know it's late. I, all right, so councilmembers, if you have any, any issues with hearing, Mayor Haskell, let me know now. If not, I will proceed and let the record shown that the councilmembers may hear Mayor Haskell okay. And I'll also note that for tonight's meeting, all votes need to be taken by roll call. And with that, the town clerk may proceed with the roll call.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walter?
Present.
Councilmember Hufdi?
Here.
Councilmember Flynn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Present.
Mayor Haskell?
Here, thank you.
We have a quorum.
Great. All right, so the first item on our agenda is an acceptance of an Eagle Scout plaque that will be put into our town archives. So I don't know if the town manager has any background or staff wishes to share any particular background before the presentation is made. No? Okay? If not?
We have, no, sorry, Town Manager Dorsey Smith, we just have a very excited Eagle Scout in the audience, it's
All good.
Almost Eagle Scout, almost Eagle Scout? No, hold it.
Okay, so what is your proposal for the process here?
Yes, the scoutmaster with the plaque couldn't make it, so why don't we reschedule this to the next meeting, which is October 8th? And if you can come back with the plaque then, then we can accept the plaque and take photos.
All right, so we'll continue that to the next meeting of the town council. Thank you, and we'll look forward to that next time. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the town manager report. So town manager, would you like to give us an update on anything?
Yes, I would. So first of all, year round this weekend, you might have had to deal with the road closures, but it was for a very good event. The, there was the annual Zots to Tot run and town picnic, so big thank you to the Parks and Rec Committee, especially Karen Askey and Patty Dews for running the event, and all the volunteers, the roads were lined with volunteers helping us out, and it was a great success and a great event to bring the community together. So the last neighborhood cleanup day of 2025 will be October 4th here at Town Center from 8 to 11, so bring anything you want to clean out of the closets. And next, I just have a quick announcement on emergency preparedness, which might be top of mind as we had a power outage last week, and I know some people were looking around for their flashlights and getting ready for what could, in the future, as we approach the rainy season, be a longer outage. So I just want to reassure everyone that the town and the town council and all the staff and our committees are committed to maintaining very high standards for public safety through the anticipation of and preparation for the potential of all hazards. That includes not just power outages, fires, flooding, earthquakes, and we partner closely with the Woodside Fire Protection District and the Sheriff's Office for collaborative multi-agency approach to emergency preparedness. And the town staff attended a training last week on emergency alerts. I was really impressed to learn that this town has 4,700 individuals signed, or phone numbers, signed up for SMC alerts, but if you aren't signed up for SMC alert, you're an outlier, so please try and sign up. And on that note, Fire Prevention Week is coming up, October 5th through 11th, so watch for more information about this important week from the town and our partners at the Woodside Fire Protection District. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for the town manager on her report? I will say and just offer that the event, the Zots to Tots and town picnic was very successful from my point of view, and I was really happy to see so many members of the council and public there. All right.
Other thing I would add is just, the EPC has been very active in getting the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center sort of staff, that's the picture that you saw, so we're making a lot of great progress.
Okay. There's another comment, we'll move to oral.
I would also, please.
I would also add, I just wanted to ask, isn't there a senior fair happening this Saturday as well?
Yes, there is a senior fair that's being hosted by Atherton, and there's information for that in our latest newsletter. And what's, in Woodside, yes.
Okay. All right. Next, we'll move to oral communications. These are inviting people to make communications regarding items not on our agenda or in connection with the town manager report. So Craig, I'm going to rely on you to see if there's any hands raised in the schoolhouse right now.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, and then I'm looking online, I do not see any hands raised online. So we can bring this back and move on to our consent agenda. So I will look to solicit comments from the public regarding any items on the consent agenda. Craig, are there any hands raised there?
There are no hands in the schoolhouse.
Okay. I'm also not seeing any hands raised online on this item. So bringing it back to council, does anyone have any of Item 6A, B, or C that they wish to pull from the agenda for separate discussion?
Can I pull the warrants, please?
Okay, so Item 6B is pulled. Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and seek a motion to approve Items 6A and C.
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, okay, then we need a roll call vote, please, on 6A and C.
Councilmember Walter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hufdi?
Yes.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great, so bringing it back, Councilmember Flynn, what would you like to discuss on the warrant?
I just had two really quick questions for Tony. There's a 2001 speed trailer for the sheriff battery for about $1,000. Could you just explain what that was for?
Yeah, that's for the, the speed sign, so the trailer is attached to the back of the truck and it's parked throughout.
Is that something the town owns, or is that something the sheriff?
The town owned, and it's, the battery had failed, it hadn't been replaced in a while, so.
And is there a schedule for when that speed trailer gets put out there, or is that determined by the sheriff or by us?
We, we set it up.
And is there a schedule associated with it, or?
I'm not aware, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know it's, it goes throughout the town. It hasn't been out because the battery has not attached it, so. But it did, you usually see it on Portola Road or Alpine, and it just tells you how fast you're going.
Okay. Oh, great, okay. And then there was a bunch of CPAS refunds. Did you just explain what those were?
Class fees, refunds. CPAS is the, the platform that residents use to make reservations.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the warrants.
Okay. I have
We'll discussion.
A couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So I see, I see a couple of bills for our roofs, and I know roofs are expensive, so I'm just checking, like, I don't want, you know, is that going to be, like, are we going to need a new roof, do you know, if we need one soon? There's Bill Hamilton roofing, Time Change roofing.
Those are probably deposit refunds for project applicants.
Oh, got it, that makes sense. Okay, good, I'm very glad to see, hear that, thank you.
That was my question, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so roll call vote then?
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Hufdi?
Aye.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. All right, next is the first item, 7A, on our regular agenda. We want to consider acceptance of the Financial Year 2021-22 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and I believe our Finance Director, Tony McFarland, has a presentation here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the tonight's item is acceptance of the Fiscal Year 21-22 audited financial statements and required documents from the Town Auditor, Mays and Associates. So the results of the audit, first and foremost, it was an unmodified opinion, basically stating that the financial statements are free from material misstatement and comply with applicable accounting standards. Financial perspective, the general fund reserve decreased a little bit under $400,000 to $5.47 million. There was a prior period adjustment of approximately $336,000 due to accounting entry errors from prior years that increased the beginning fund balance reserve. Our government-wide net position increased $4.1 million to $51 million. Now, the financial statements are presented in two formats. There's the fund financial statements, which is all of the town's funds reported individually, and then we have the government-wide financial statements, where they're consolidated into one statement, and then our GASB adjustments for fixed assets, net pension liability or assets, and our OPEB liability are factored in as well. So when I say the government-wide net position, that also includes our, not only our fund financial statements, but also our OPEB liability, our pension liability, and our fixed assets. Our government-wide net position is $51 million. There was an adjustment to net pension liability of $2.9 million, which will be recognized in 22-23's financial statements, and as a result, created a net pension asset instead of a net pension liability. Now, the reason for these adjustments is that there's a, there's a timing difference between the measurement date of the liability and the valuation date. So any activity that happens in the pension fund needs to be adjusted as a deferred inflow or deferred outflow of resources, and so that resulted in a $2.9 million adjustment, which actually reduced the expenses on the government. The Finance Committee did review and recommended that the town council accept the 21-22 audited financial statements and related documents in August. Other items to note, the auditors in the Memorandum of Internal Controls noted that there were no material deficiencies. There were some significant deficiencies, one was in segregation of duties. That issue has been resolved for Fiscal Year 23-24, but it will still be in the Memorandum of Internal Control for 22-23. Journal entry review and approval, again, that issue has been resolved for Fiscal Year 23-24. The one issue that we're still working on is our timely bank reconciliations, and that should be resolved for 25-26. There were no reportable errors. We did not have, we were exempt from the single audit because we did not spend more than $750,000 in federal funds, and in the timeliness of audit completion, we're still not compliant in that area, and we're currently working on the 22-23 audit as we speak. And looking at the audit schedule for 22-23, we're preparing to have a trial balance to the auditors by November, and also all the schedules that they have asked to Mays. Mays will have a draft of the financial statements in December, and we'll have the Finance Committee and Town Council review and accept the audited financial statements in January. For 23-24, we'll have a trial balance and schedules prepared by April. We'll try and target for an earlier date, but April is the target right now. May is when the draft of the financial statements will be available. In June, we'll have the Finance Committee and Town Council review and accept the financial statements. 24-25, looking to have a trial balance by July 26th, and Mays will have a draft by August with Finance Committee and Town Council review by September of '26. Also, in September of '26, because we have incurrence and more consistent with our financial postings on the ledger, we should have a pro forma for '25-26 in the same month of September of '26. This concludes my report for the audit, and I turn it back to council for questions.
Thank you, Tony, very helpful. It's a long packet on this topic, so we'll come back to council and see what questions you all have. First, Rebecca, do you want to get started with the questions?
Okay. Can you just explain to me what the, what the different levels are for deficiencies? Material, significant, et cetera?
A material deficiency means that there could be a material misstatement of the financial statements, that is the highest, and that creates also, it's a higher risk, so then that means that the auditors would be reviewing more of our accounting transactions. But material is, I guess we'd say the highest or the worst deficiency noted in a financial statement.
And then?
It would also affect the opinion as well.
And then the level, the levels below that, or what are the?
Significant is if it's not addressed, then it could become a material deficiency if not addressed, especially if it's a repeat finding.
And are there levels below that?
There's material and then significant, those are the two.
Okay. And then, can you go into a little bit more detail about what is actually involved in auditing our books? Because you have on your thing, you said, "Staff provides completed trial balance and schedules to Mays." I just, I'm not entirely sure what's involved in that.
So we, we would submit a trial balance of all our accounting entries for every fund to the auditors. Also, they, they give us a PBC list, which is prepared by client. It's about 30 separate items, and it's, you know, accounts receivable schedule, accounts payable schedule, fixed assets, changes in fixed assets, and then it's our, our valuation reports for OPEB and pension liability. But it's all to substantiate the numbers that we're going to be presenting in the financial statement. And then from there, they will do their selection, you know, on expenses and revenue, so they will ask us to provide the backup for a deposit or the backup for an expense. And then also, they're going to look at all our journal entries, full selections from those, and then they're going to review those, and they're going to source it, you know, from the beginning document all the way to the end, and make sure that it's posted correctly. Review our policies and procedures, so yeah, it's, there's quite a bit involved, you know.
So if you had to sort of estimate in terms of staff hours to put that package together initially, where, what do you think? Is that the whole department's at it, or you're mostly involved in it?
It's all hands on deck, and it's every, each of the, each of the PBC list is assigned to different staff, and it, hundreds of hours.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
Of hours of staff time, prepare all this stuff for the audit.
And PBC stands?
Prepared by client.
Oh, okay. So it's not question, it's not, so all of our information is in a software system, however?
Yes, it's in Open Gov, yes.
Okay, and in terms of getting repaired for the next audits, when you talk about checking the ledgers and all the accounting balances for all of the different transactions, do you anticipate that still needs to happen for the other years, or do you anticipate that it's all accurate?
Right now, we are working in 22-23.
Okay.
Yes, so when we finish 22-23, then we'll then move on to 23-4, but we'll still be working in 25-26.
I see, okay. And so then in terms of actual numbers, so personally, I found reading the report quite difficult. Part of the issues was just simple things that I hope can be corrected in the next year's audit, and that's sort of the formatting of the tables, the way they fall from one page to the next without the, the actual left-hand column legend made it pretty impossible, unless I printed it all out, and I didn't want to kill some trees for this, you know, to kind of know what each one, so I don't know if that's a request you can make for the auditor for coming years, but, you know, either print it sideways, or smaller font, or, or carry the legend over, because, you know, that's, it made it really
I will make that request.
And then there were some things like custodial form funds and fiduciary funds. Is there a difference between those two, or are those the same?
There is a difference, I mean, it is, they're defined differently under GASB. A custodial fund is we're just holding on to the money, like the road maintenance districts, and then the fiduciary fund is usually like an investment fund or, but we don't, but I mean, our custodial funds are the road maintenance district.
I see, okay. And then what are our non-spendable assets? There's a very small amount listed on page 40.
Yes, so that's a loan receivable, and that's an asset we cannot spend, so that gets excluded from, or it gets categorized, categorized, and it's all GASB 54, the fund balance, allocations and designations and definitions.
So a loan receivable means somebody owes us money?
Yes, we have a loan to one of the road maintenance districts, and they pay us back.
To one of the, sorry?
One of the road maintenance districts has a loan receivable.
All right. And then there was a big change in pension liability?
Yes.
That year, of, I guess, 1.2 million? Am I interpreting that correct? The, the town at that time chose to put 1.2 million from our?
No, it's a, it's a GASB adjustment, and I kind of alluded to it in my presentation. It's a timing difference between the measurement date and the valuation date. So any changes in Alpers's assumptions or actual revenue and investments gets read, gets adjusted from 22-20, 21-22's valuation, but the, the, the actual valuation date or the measurement date was from two years prior. So, because there is a, there's a two-year difference between the measurement date and the valuation date. So any actual changes in the pension fund between the two dates gets adjusted and put into the deferred outflow or deferred influence, in one of the notes for the pension liability.
Right, that was a little tough to understand.
It was tough to understand when it was implemented.
Right, okay, so does that mean that, is it a positive for us or a negative for?
Positive this year, but next year it's going to be recognized in 22-23, but it'll be offset by whatever changes are made for 22-23.
I see, okay. So when I, when it, it said that in 2022, we had a signed fund balance of 3.5 million as part of our actual general fund, so we, we, in a sen, in essence, we have a lot less, we had a lot less money in '22 than we really thought, you know, is that correct interpretation of that?
Well, no, assigned fund balance is one component of fund balance. There's, there's spendable, non-spendable.
Right, yeah.
So assigned is, these are designations that council has made, and it's for contingency, capital projects, OPEB, and so these were designations that the council had made, they, they're unchanged from the previous year.
Okay.
But the unassigned is the one that floats up and down because that's where the actual activity flows into, unless council would want to move some unassigned to assigned.
Okay, yeah, that particular table on page, I don't know what page it was, but that particular table was very difficult to read because the formatting was off, again, the tabbing, they had tabbed part of that, which, I, I can kind of show you offline how it would have made it more, more understandable, but, because totals were missing and what have you, but, yeah, that made it extra confusing. Let me see, special revenue projects are listed as 13 million on page 49.
Sorry, what was?
Let me just see, find it myself here. Yeah, the pagination, the way our
Yeah, because the financial statements have their own
Have their own pagination, yeah, so page
What?
Forty, let me see.
They're on the top of the page.
Hang on, I have to find it here. Hang on, I don't, maybe we can, well, it was just a confirmation, so maybe if, if I find it later, I'll find it for you.
Sure.
You discussed three, you discussed the three significant deficiencies, and you have detailed how they're being, that they've been, they have been corrected essentially, except maybe the last one?
Yep.
So the last one, the timely bank reconciliations, will not, is that being already done now, or is that, that requires you to have all the, the numbers right before you can really?
Part of the issue with the bank reconciliations was what was coming through our system from Intergov and from CPAS, and where it wasn't necessarily tying up with the deposits we were making at the bank, and so
Oh, gosh.
Tying those two together has been a thorny issue for myself, but they've made some changes in Open Gov, so where now it's, the credit cards are summarized, the pot caches are, cash, or the checks are summarized, so that helps me better to reconcile to what's actually going through the bank statement. And that is going to be a tremendous help in getting our bank reconciliations done more timely.
And then page 99 listed all the funds, and I didn't see the, our inclusionary Affordable Housing Fund, is that, did that not exist back then, or?
Page again?
99 of the packets. Think, yeah, non-governmental, is that, is it maybe not a non-governmental fund?
Oh, no, it's a major fund. It's, it is presented separately, or if you look on the, one of our major funds, so
Okay.
Won't be included in a non-major government.
Okay, so those Okay, so those are the kind of distinguished distinctions that are hard to understand, yeah.
Our open space fund, gas tax and inclusionary are major.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is, I was looking at the plan for the budgetary schedules and it, I, I found it odd that the first thing was to provide a proposed budget to the finance committee to, for review and approval before the town council even sees the budget. So I find that difficult to understand why it's presented that way and why that's the way it's done.
Well, I believe this is how it was done in twenty-one, twenty-two.
I see. Are we still doing it that way or?
Uh, no, it's last process. I mean, yes, the finance committee did review, but the council also saw as well. So the finance committee and the council saw the same thing going through the whole process.
Okay.
So yeah, that'll be updated for twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty, well, no, twenty-five, twenty.
I guess those are my last questions and I just wanted to thank you for, you and your staff for the incredible amount of work that put into this. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Mary, do you have questions for Tony?
I, I do. Mine are sort of a higher level, I'd say. Ever having been in the situation where we had, where I had experience with an audit that was this far behind, my question is, is there, was there anything about this process that kept you up at night? That, that surprised you or anything in particular that you learned from this process that you weren't expecting? That's one of my questions. I have a few more that are very similar to that.
I think the, the one thing that keeps me up at night is that, I mean, I just, there's other things that I need to do that are part of my job and I really, it does pull me away from the audit. And, you know, because we've got the budget and there's a reason why the budget schedule or the budget cycle and the audit cycle are at two different parts of the year. But when you're so far behind, I mean, and we are in a very unique position because this is, this is a rare position to be in for, and we're trying to do something that's never been done before. Complete, get caught up on these audits within a twelve-month period. And, and it's, the challenge is keeping on top of it, but yet also still keeping on top of the current posting budget. And the other issue that comes up, like last year was the, you know, we had town manager left. We had, we had to revise our fund balance. Then we had to do a revised budget. And, and then, but also still maintain an audit schedule. And so that's what keeps me up is staying on top of the audit.
Yeah. So that sort of leads to my next question, which is, was it worth doing this audit? What did we gain from doing this audit?
We have to do the.
Because?
Because it's required.
By?
The law. State code.
State code.
We are required to do audits every year.
Okay. And of course, that asks the, you know, the immediate, the question is, why didn't we do this audit? If that were true, but, but I guess the question that comes after that is, have we missed something in this audit that we should know about? Do you feel in any way that we missed something? I mean, you know, when we get in these big bankruptcies of these big companies, there's a something that doesn't get.
No.
Audit doesn't show.
It, it was just poor bookkeeping. And, and, you know, because at the time staff, there's only two. We have three now or three and a half. But it was overwhelmed. I mean, there was, there was COVID implementing new, new systems, new software and just not having enough resources dedicated. That, that was the main, major issue back in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty.
Another question that I've, I've wondered in other companies as well is why the auditor doesn't present?
The auditor will present when we're caught up. So, I mean, otherwise it's, I'm going to be bringing the auditor and the auditor is only, is only going to be basically regurgitating the report. And then, and you've seen all the reports that they've sent.
The, this is when we got legally behind right now. So this would seem like a, the more significant time to be getting that kind of expertise.
I'm not following.
Mary, are you asking about why the auditor isn't here today or do you have a concern?
Yeah, my question is, is it customary? And he answered the question.
Yeah, right.
It is customary if we were on schedule.
Right. And my question back was why, what makes not being on schedule more of a, of a likely opportunity to not have the auditor here?
Because the report would be the same. You know, she would be reporting on the material weaknesses of the memorandum of internal controls. And those will not change until twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay. And the, the next question was, is the present schedule that we have realistic and budgeted? Can we actually do this? And it's budgeted. Right?
Provided, I mean, I, I can't, I can't predict the future. But if a contingency comes up that, you know, I have to reschedule the audit schedule, then I'm going to have to. But I want to get done with the next year's audit before December so that I can jump on the budget. That's why there's a gap in between the two years.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge burden on, on, on you.
But this is going to be my second year doing the budget. So what I've learned from this year will help me shortcut next year's.
So were you surprised by this, by the, by the audit results?
No. Also remember that Kershaw Company or Christian Company actually also helped getting us caught up with this as well.
Yeah.
Working with them, they, they highlighted nothing out of the ordinary. It was just poor bookkeeping and timing.
Okay. Do you see, aside from the obvious hidden risk of diverting our attention from becoming fiscally self-involved, are there any other hidden risks of having done this audit, of doing these audits? As well as the obvious benefits?
Well, as the, as the auditor put in their report, there were no reportable errors and nothing is missing. What, what we've deposited, what we posted is there. So, so we're, so yes, I mean, we're, nothing is missing at this, at that point.
I think probably summarizes my questions. Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
Great. Thanks, Mary. Craig, how about you?
Um, I've attended the finance committee at the liaison, so I've already had a chance to go completely through the thorough work of Tonya. So I don't have any questions tonight. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Helen, do you have questions?
I do have a few. Thank you. Just to be clear, what's the difference between a single audit, because we spent less than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds, and the audit we have in front of us?
So if we did spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, you would have a separate audit.
Got it.
On our, how, how we spent the federal funds.
Interesting. Okay. Well, federal funds are a pain in the butt to deal with, so.
And a report?
Okay. Okay, a few. Why didn't the franchise fees go up by, what is it, ninety-two percent?
Why did they?
Yes, ninety-two point.
So there was some timing differences on that. Some of that num, some of that number includes revenue from the previous year. That wasn't captured. It was posted later than the cutoff date. So.
Than what? Sorry?
It was prior year revenue reported or posted in the, in the current.
So, and then in future audits, we'll still see regular cost of living increases and not?
But it'll be more consistent. It won't, it'll be, what is accrued for that year will be posted for that year.
Okay, thank you. The changes in net position of almost eight hundred percent?
Yes. We had a four point one million.
So it's because of the interest situation. Okay. Thank you.
Out of that is based on adjustments required by GASB. I mean, the book entries. But they do have an impact on our, our net position bottom line.
The changes in pension liability of six hundred and fifty-five percent, negative, right?
Well, that's a reduction.
Right.
Yeah. So again, as, as alluded to earlier, it's because of the GASB adjustments, because of the timing difference between the measurement and valuation date.
Right. Okay. So in the future, some years it's higher, some years it will be lower?
Fair to have a net pension asset, but next year, I, I'm pretty sure next year it'll be a net pension liability again.
Okay. Thank you. Obviously, by state law mandate, we were out of compliance.
Yes.
We still are out of compliance. Are there any potent, do we know what the potential consequences of being out of state compliance?
I am not aware of any, other than you're getting constant emails to where's your, where's your audited financial statements? Please submit them. Unlike other reporting requirements like your gas tax, if you're out of compliance, they're, they'll withhold gas tax. And if you got to measure N, measure W, there's some penalties there. If you're late in reporting or significantly out of compliance, then yeah, some of those funds can be.
Great. Thank you. Also, just for the record, we were still, were we still locked into the five-year agreement with the share of contracts at this point in twenty-two? I think we were still locked.
Still were, I believe that expired in twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay. So next year is when we start seeing those increases or the next audit?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, I think is the, the year of the significant increase.
And when will we start seeing the housing element planning costs separated out?
You will start seeing those in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. Because our fund balance will go from where it is for twenty-one, twenty-two to two point three million for, for the end of twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thanks. You also, just for the record, like, talk, talk about the deferred outflows and inflows of resources.
Again, those are related to the adjustments made for pension liability and our. It's basically any expense or any activity between the measurement and valuation date is recorded as a deferred outflow or inflow, depending on how it impacts the bottom line or the, the net pension liability or the OPEB liability. But it's just a timing difference.
Great. Okay. That's it. Thank you. Thanks for a great job.
Yeah.
Great. So Tony, I don't have too much. I did want to ask a question about the capital asset depreciation schedules because buildings are in two of the line items. I don't know if you can flesh that out as to how you think about the depreciation of the buildings versus, and I'm not remembering the page this is on. But there's a, the depreciation schedule is all I'm asking about.
Right. So they're, they're, they're presented in two ways. One, it's the gross cost of the asset, either the infrastructure, land improvements, building and improvement and equipment. And then underneath, it's less accumulated depreciation. So we have to keep count of the accumulated depreciation as, because every asset has a useful life.
Right.
So it's tracked separately, but it's netted for the bottom line.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. In terms of the significant deficiencies, this is a, and this is a question. So tell me if this is right. Each year they go through and they, they have their areas of inquiry and they'll know a significant deficiency for that year. We know that these have been addressed in a future year and they, they kind of make reference to that. But each year they go in and they make an independent determination for that year if there's a significant deficiency or something even more material. And where I'm going with this is just, there, there's a difference between that year, because we're dealing with things in retrospect. So in twenty-one, there might have been a significant deficiency. In twenty-twenty-two, we might know that it was, or twenty-three, it might have been corrected. But each year they're going to do the same analysis. It's not like you tick the box and you never look at it again, right? I just want to make sure.
You're right. We, we fill out an internal control questionnaire.
Yeah.
It's part of the audit process. And then from there, they do their review. But again, they start from, okay, this was a deficiency in the prior year. What have you done?
Yeah.
To correct it. And so that's why we've stated in our response this year is we've corrected this. But it might show up again for twenty-two, twenty-three because it might have been a deficiency year as well, because it wasn't addressed until twenty-three, twenty-four. When we specifically segregation of duties, we only had two people. But now we have three and a half, so we can actually split that up in between four people.
Okay. And, and so where I'm going with that is more, there's rigor in the system. They, they take the same steps. They apply them each year. Even if they have a sense of something being wrong in the past year, they're still going to be looking each year that we do an audit for the same things. They're just going to have some context that they go back and check that something was corrected or continues to be corrected. But each year they're, they're applying the same standards in the same way, right? I mean, isn't that the value of an audit?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And this was a particularly hard one to do, just given the passage of time and the fact that it was during the pandemic, et cetera. And so if we think about the timeline and the, the, the way of getting this ambitious timeline achieved, is it safe to say this was the hardest one? The next one will be the second hardest one, but there will be some efficiencies going forward because both it's less distant in the past and that some of the, the accounting procedures were corrected over time. I just want to know how to think about this timeline because you are going from a very long time period preparing this one to what we really hope and believe can be shorter and more efficient timelines in the next year. Is that the right way of thinking about it?
Yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three will, will be a little bit similar. But again, we've, we've identified some efficiencies, so we'll be able to take care of that. But twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five should not take that long to pull everything together because we are current, we're staying on top of. I mean, we're posting every day. So and then twenty-five, twenty-six is just going to keep a continuation of what we're continuing, what we're currently doing. So I should have a pro forma financial statement ready for that September.
Okay. Great. And, and I just want to follow up on a question regarding the importance or lack of importance of the auditors presenting because I, you said at the one hand, if this were this year's and we were caught up, they would be here and they're not. So is that something that's significant in and of itself? Or is that, like, how do I think about that in terms of, is this an important component of being, being reasonably secure in where we are? Is that just a factor or not?
We can, I mean, if, if, if you want a presentation from the auditor, we can. Um, we can, I mean, if, if, if you want a presentation from the auditor, we can, I can have the auditor come uh, for the next one.
Right.
Presentation to the finance committee. Um, but, um, but like I said, it's going to be pretty redundant.
Yeah.
Until we're caught up.
But what, I mean, my question isn't whether we want them to come for the sake of coming because their written word is frankly almost more important, uh, in a way. But it's more, why is it something that's they do at the end? Like, if we were caught up, what, what is that difference signifying?
Well, that would be the normal cadence. It's, we, we do our, we do our audits and then, or we do our audits and when the, the, the financial statements are ready to be presented, um, the, the auditor would come. And, and honestly, it would be the audit committee, which would be the finance committee.
Yeah.
But, um, the, the auditor can also come and answer questions. Uh, but that would be the normal cadence is if it's, if we are current.
Mm-hmm. Is that just because they're able to, they're more comfortable answering questions on a more current, real-time audit, uh, because I'm, I'm not hearing why that's significant? Like, why is that a big deal? And I'm frankly hearing on the side of it isn't, but tell me if that's wrong.
Well, it's not wrong, it's, it's just, like I said, the, the information that they would be presenting is, would be redundant from year to year.
Yeah.
But the other, um, just lost my train of thought.
So, so Tony, isn't another way to think about auditor cumulative? So each year, you need the year before and you keep working up until we finally get to being up to date, which because they're cumulative implies that the whole chain before that was all good. And so that's the time when it makes sense for the auditor to be back there because they're saying, okay, now that we've got the complete cumulative chain. So I'm, I think what I'm hearing is that we could have them come and say, but until we, we get the whole cumulative chain put together, it, unless we don't trust Tony and we need an auditor here, it doesn't buy us much.
Because right now, all they, all they're going to tell you is that, yes, these changes have been made since I've been here.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, it's not going to present, it's not going to really see when you get the memorandum of internal control and there are no deficiencies. And, um, you know, then that's when the auditor can come and say, well, this is where you were. This is where you are now and this is the progress that you've made.
Okay, well, I guess a different way of looking at it is this is not, their lack of commenting now, um, and I'm not asking for that because I'm not, I don't see a need for it. It's not unusual for essentially catch-up audits. Okay, that, that's all I really needed.
You also receive their reports.
Right.
So, and those were vetted by the finance committee.
Yes, okay. All right, um, does any other member of council have any additional questions before we go to public comment? Okay, not hearing any. Uh, we'll, we'll go to public comment and there is a hand raised. Uh, so Rita.
No hands in the schoolhouse.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Rita, you're online and your hand is raised, go ahead.
Well, thank you for taking my comment. Um, first I want to say, you know, it's just nice to hear these conversations so that we have, um, some progress, um, moving forward. And I believe it was last year or the year before that Grace from, um, Mays and Associates had come to a finance meeting and, uh, answered many questions about the, uh, the, the audits that were behind. But that was before, uh, Tony's, Tony's time, uh, here. Uh, so my comment and reading through the different pages is the, some of the, some of the language, um, is like in hindsight. You know, even though these numbers are from, uh, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, it's, it's with knowledge of twenty-twenty-five. But, uh, you know, it's like reading a book that pages are missing or something. And, uh, I know that in the Mays letters that are in there, at the very end of all of those letters, it says August twenty-twenty-five. But if, uh, if somebody were to just be reading this, you know, years from now, it looks like it was, there's a, just a disconnect. And if somehow those words could be, uh, part of the document or, uh, in the pages so that people know that without reading till the very end, that this was done in twenty-twenty-five. Um, so this is, this document is basically, um, hindsight and fixing things. And I know there are the corrections and the words on the, in the end. But, um, if that could get fixed, that would, um, really, uh, help. And, uh, I didn't mention this earlier, but if we could go back to the, uh, the red pages uh, for the agenda and the document was a little bit confusing with all the changes in the numbers. And I know Tony mentioned something about that earlier. But, um, I guess it's something for, um, you know, for the office to, to do and appreciate it. But appreciate the, the movement on it and, uh, just would like to see it faster. But we can only do what we can do and, uh, it's unfortunate that we're in this situation. But we're, we're trying our best to move forward. So thank you for the hard work and it's too bad we're in this situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands online right now. I'll give it a couple of seconds. And, um, one question, I'm scrolling through here, Tony. Is there a, I mean, there, this is going to be approved now. So the fact that this is being approved in twenty-twenty-five, I'm looking to see if the auditor's communication reflects the fact that they prepared this in twenty-twenty-five. Is there any such notation?
It would be the date of the audit letter, which is the very beginning of the, uh,
Yeah.
the opinion letter, it's dated, uh, twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you for locating that.
And I'd also like to add that the next steps are once accepted. Um, it's in draft format right now. Uh, the auditors will go through, clean it up and present the final version. And then we'll post that onto the website.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands unless there's any in the schoolhouse, we can bring it back for discussion. And I'll, I'll start in the opposite direction. Um, Helen, if you have any comments that, or discussion points, feel free.
Yeah, no, um, first of all, I am, um, happy that we are here. I am grateful for the staff for getting us to this point. We still are not done. Um, I was relieved to see that, uh, that there, you know, we did not have any um, nefarious activities going on, right? Um, so I was grateful that we did not find skeletons in the closet. Um, and I am glad, uh, to see where we're at and I appreciate um, and I appreciate that. So, uh, that's my comments. Thank you.
Okay, Craig, anything?
Just, I mean, we say it all the time, but, um, I'm so relieved that Tony's here. I mean, the, the night and day of going through this with a professional who's on top of it, knows what's going on and that we have clear line of sight to the end, um, is a huge relief. So, you know, I tell Tony every time I see him how much I appreciate it. And let me say it from the dais, Tony, thank you very much for all your hard work and, and your staff as well. But I really appreciate the, the work you're doing.
Yeah, okay, Mary?
Uh, well, I think this is the moment to ask the big question, which is, um, why this happened? And, uh, and whether we've made the, uh, correct, made adequate correction so that it doesn't ever happen again. And it appears that it was, that the why, uh, was that there was no obvious consequences. And actually, that's what I was told when I asked. People said, well, you don't really have to do them. Um, and so, uh, if that's true, we're wasting a lot of time, but no, I mean, no, I don't think we're wasting a lot of time. But that, I think it's not true. I think there are real consequences in terms of loss of faith of the community, in terms of loss of financial visibility, et cetera, and knowing where you are financially. Uh, what's interesting about this audit is that we were in, in good financial health at that point, right? Isn't that what's really remarkable here? That's a, a, that's amazing and now we're not. Um, and maybe that's the reason they didn't, they thought it wasn't important. But it falls pretty, pretty directly on the council, the staff and the finance committee that, that we were not doing this. And, and I do believe the will is there, certainly in the council and in the finance committee and obviously in the staff. And if in fact, we've taken care of this problem, more power to us. But I just think this is the moment to say this shall never happen again. Uh, if, if that's what our, our sense is.
This is our time for discussion, so I, I think that's what you're saying is you'd like to see this never happen again.
That's correct. Well, I'd, I'm looking for uh, if everybody agrees on that.
Well, I can certainly agree to that. I, I would also say that COVID was an impact, um, the town. Now, hear me out, that I'm not saying that COVID was the answer. I'm saying COVID was there. Um, we had a different town manager. I think that wasn't completely transparent. Um, I don't think the council pushed, so I think there's a lot of things. I think this council's done a lot more to push. Um, and Tony's done a much better job of being here, um, and, and explaining this stuff clearly. So I really do feel like we're in a better situation. And I think it's up to future councils to make sure that the financial director that we have is up to the task and make sure that they're presenting the information as we need it. I mean, that's.
That's all you can do, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
That's all we can do.
And I think that's what we have done now.
Mary, anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, Rebecca?
Um, yeah, again, I, I want to kind of repeat what other people have said. And, um, I'm very appreciative that we're on top of our financial documents, that the, um, finance department has put in so much work. Um, I have very much faith in you directing this and I appreciate that you're with us. Um, I'm very relieved that there was no material deficiencies. Um, I'm very glad to hear that most of the processes have already been corrected um, since the, since they were identified. Um, I guess, um, it's, it's important to me that we continue to stay very much on top of our budgets. We do continue to be very aware of all expenses. We cannot run into another situation where, um, a staff comes to the council to ask for more money for a contract that we signed and thought was going to be adequate, fun, adequately funded. And then a consultant decides that they need another hundred grand. We, we, we have to continue to stay very vigilant about that problem and stay on top of our consultants so that we don't ever run into a housing element type of fiasco that we did. And I feel confident that we will, um, be kept apprised on that sort of thing. Um, and I'm glad we have new town manager who's also on top of that, um, sort of thing and is looking very closely at all of our contracts and our consultants. Um, I guess my last question, it's more of a question, is would it be, would sort of an additional temporary resources make a difference in getting the work done more quickly for the future audits?
Tony, do you want to take that?
Once we get the bank rec process down, um, I am considering adding our time, uh, for just doing the bank recs and get those up to date.
Bank reconciliation, okay. Well, that's good to know so that we can kind of plan for that for the next budgets and what have you. Great, well, I appreciate it. I, I think this, I'm, I feel very confident that Mays did a good job with this. Um, just a few formatting issues that I will communicate to you directly. And otherwise, I'm, I'm glad that we're moving forward and I feel like the town is much more stable now. And we have a much better platform to move forward with, um, further stabilization.
Great, thank you.
And as part of this discussion, the only thing I, when you say stable, I would say stable relative to the audits rather than our overall finances. Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the addendized item. Um, so my comments are that this is a super important piece of a set of steps we need to be taking this year. And it, it's been a long time coming and I know everyone has found it a challenge. So thanks to the staff for, for sticking with it all, laying it out. Um, you know, keeping us informed about what's going on and where the, uh, the impediments have been over the last year. Because this is a really important step. We've got a lot to do this year to catch up. We've got a lot to do to reinstate trust in the community if we end up, uh, going out for revenue enhancement measures or other solutions to solve our longer-term financial stability issue. So really important step, let's, let's be thankful we're here and recognize that we've got to continue the effort on a steady basis, uh, going forward. I am heartened to hear that each incremental step is likely, absent unknown circumstances, to, uh, be a little easier each time and, and that's great. So, you know, this is the hardest one and, and I, I really admire all the effort pulled together. Um, you know, an audit letter is a serious thing. Um, Mays takes its time and makes sure it's being rigorous with how it does these things. So it's also comforting, um, to, to see that they're finding things that, you know, we have in fact corrected. One of the reasons to go back and ask why we got here is because we might be worried about what we don't know. I think between the Chris report of, um, you know, processes that we could be optimizing and the Mays report now, we have a good read on all of that. And we just have to keep focused and deliver on all of that. So really appreciate all the work here. And, you know, I, I know this council takes its role in, in looking at all this very seriously. And if we can be of help, great. Um, but we, we truly want to look at this coming year as something that we and the staff need to be moving forward together with and supporting each other uh, because we've got a big, a big ask over the next year. So thank you very, very much and, um, uh, really well done. And thanks to the finance committee, which has really stepped up as well to put us in a position where we can, uh, absent unknown events, uh, get to a place that we're, we're in a position to, to have a longer-term plan that works. So, uh, I think we can move on, uh, from this topic.
I have one more, I have one more, uh, point.
Yeah, sure.
Um, the new, uh, council doesn't, is not aware that I've been pushing for an audit committee or an audit subcommittee since, uh, we discovered that the audits hadn't been done. Uh, and I just thought you should know that, that that's a convention in business to have a separate audit committee that actually checks on the finance committee to make sure they are aware that the audit has to be done and, and why. Uh, and that would be, that would have been and is a standard form of correction for this kind of inconsistency, shall we call it? Um, so I just wanted everybody to know that. I think it came to, it came to the finance committee. Uh, they considered it, they decided they didn't need it. Now, uh, we could bring it up again or they could, I could bring it up on other forums. I just, I still feel that it, it's the only way to show that we actually did something to make this not happen again.
I respectfully, Mary, I disagree with that. It's not the only way that we can show that we take this seriously. I think we've done a lot to show we take it seriously. And I will turn this over to staff if they have a comment. But my understanding is different jurisdictions solve this differently as far as having an audit subcommittee of either the council or the finance, um, committee having a separate audit committee. Um, I, this is not addendized, so if there's a quick kind of perspective, I think that might be okay. But if it's anything more
That's fine.
more, you know, complicated, we should take those other venues, Mary, I think.
Right, I just wanted to, for, for information.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure. Okay. I don't know if you have any comments, staff, or we can move on if not.
So Tony has his mic on. Do you have a comment, Tony?
Yeah, the, uh, the consistent practice is that the finance committee of whatever city town, part of their bylaws or their direction is they are the audit committee as well. Um, I mean, it's, it's, it comes part, part and parcel of their duties.
Okay.
Can I just also say something?
Yeah, please.
Um, you know, most cities and towns only have four or five or maybe six committees, right? Um, and we, some of our committees right now don't know what the other ones are doing because they're splintered and, right? And so, um, and I appreciate that the finance committee has done a good job. Um, I don't know what happened in 22 that they, you know? Um, um, so I would just, I don't know on the bylaws if we have that the finance committee needs to meet monthly, quarterly, you know, as like to make sure that we, they, we have that oversight happening, maybe.
They need on an ad hoc basis, and they are actually called the finance and audit committee.
Thank you, so maybe.
They have acknowledged that, that, that someone should have asked questions back.
Right, so maybe the bylaws, maybe we should consider potentially looking at the bylaws for the finance and our charter, thank you, um, the charter and, uh, at least quarterly or some such if we wanted to.
So can I just suggest we are getting pretty far afield from the agenda item?
Yeah.
I think, I think the comment is obvious.
Yeah, um, uh, Rebecca, do you have any comments on this? Or shall we wrap this one up and take some of these points and see if there's follow up?
Um, are we supposed to approve this?
Well, we're, we're about to, um, decide whether to accept this, uh, if that's the correct terminology, Catherine.
Yes, it's, uh, the recommended, um, action is to by motion receive, accept and file, uh, the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 21, 22.
Okay, so is there any further discussion before we have a motion for that?
No.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty?
Aye.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Husco?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you again, Tony.
Thank you. All right, so do people need a break or shall we just go straight to the verbal update from the Revenue Enhancement Options Subcommittee?
I think the next one's pretty short, so I will.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I think everybody's good here. So unless you need, you know, how are you doing?
Nope, I'm good.
It's, it's, it's late there, yeah.
It's not bad, uh, we'll keep going. So, uh, on to seven B, uh, I don't know how, um, councilmembers Taylor and, uh, Walter want to present, but I'll turn it over to you.
Helen, you want to start or? No, that's, that's fine. I just got back in town, so we did not compare notes, but Helen, go ahead.
Um, so, so, uh, there are some prepared talking points. But before I get to those, um, I really want to say that we can't say, um, we are, uh, we are here for this survey due to our financial challenges since this audit in 22. Um, and we need to know what the community is thinking, and that's why the poll is out. Um, good or bad, um, we need to hear what people are thinking. Um, and we need to really hear what you think about the proposed revenue enhancements. Is it too much, too little? And last, um, before I get to the prepared comments, um, it's a long poll. It's going to take 25 minutes. So get a glass of water, get a soda, get a glass of wine and take the survey. Um, and we are sorry in advance that it's long, um, but we really, really need to hear from the community about this. Um, you know, it, and we recognize that not, you know, that it, that this is going to take a chunk of time, that this feedback is val- valid, um, and helpful about next steps that the council will take and staff will take. So do we have, do you want to do anything else? You want me to keep going? Okay, okay. Um, you know, we had, we've had some questions. We saw something on the forum come up, like, is this survey valid? You know, there is a lot of spam out there, right? Um, it's, the text is coming from a 415 area code, which, you know, we used to be 415 here for those of us old enough for that, to remember that. Um, but we're 650 now, but the survey's coming from a 415 area code. Um, or Las Vegas, right? Um, um, you know, where did the town get your cell phone number to text or call, right? Um, that's often part of your voter registration, to be honest. Um, and that, those voter registration rolls, um, people can get from the county. Um, if you, you know, FCC regulations say you can't text. Um, it's a misunderstanding from, um, the FCC regulations because of auto dialing. Uh, uh, this survey, it's all by hand. Um, please don't forward the invite to your family or friends. You are the voter we're trying to reach. You know, they're trying to reach a cross section of ages and, um, and, uh, gender and other things. I don't know all of the data, uh, statistics that they're trying to hit, but they have specifically chosen that voter. Um, so, um, that, those are my comments. And in la- I will accept to say lastly, I, I am grateful for people who take the time to help us figure out next steps. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'll, sure, I'll just add a few other things. Just to put it in the broader context to remind people that, you know, as we've gone through the audits, um, and we're, you know, getting closer to being up to date, you know, the big elephant in the room is in the sheriff's contract, um, which has changed our financial picture significantly. And so we've talked in prior council meetings about revenue enhancement. And so the poll that Helen's referring to is going to go out to the community. Um, and it's a sample to, as Helen was saying, to give us the pulse of the community. So, um, it really is important. The other thing I would add is Helen and I did spend considerable time with the consultant going through the questionnaire to make sure that it made sense in the Portola Valley context. Um, so again, this is an important poll. It'll help us move forward next year. Thank you.
Um, okay, so will the staff have anything to add to that?
No, I'll just say the next steps on this are that the survey should be completed in the next few weeks. And we anticipate bringing a study session item back to the city count, back to the town council. We're aiming for November 12th. And that would be again, a study session where the town council receives information about the survey results and a full analysis of, um, staff's review and our consultant's review of the results. And then it's presented with the town council with a request for more direction on how to proceed for the, the next step in this process, which would be potentially refining it to one, one measure and taking that measure further through the analysis of what's required to place it on the ballot in November 2026.
Okay, thank you. Um, Rebecca, do you have any questions for the subcommittee?
Uh, sure, also for the staff. I, I got an email from the town with just a little blurb saying the survey's happening. Did that go out to the town? Did it go to the, it didn't go to the PV forum, so.
No, it went out on our main e notification list, and it was also posted on our website. And the, the main purpose of that was just so that the community was aware that it was an official request from the town to complete the survey and not.
We have a sense of how many people in the town are actually registered for the town's mailing list.
We have about, we have about a thousand residents that are listed on our e-news. So it is also on our website in case we don't reach specific residents. We've also given each of our staff numbers that answer our phone lines in case there are any questions that come up related to the survey. It's that same blurb that they have, as well as some additional FAQs that they're able to answer.
And is that on the homepage? That.
That is not, but we will make the phone number for the front desk available so we can answer those questions.
And is there a reason not to respond on the PV forum with that same exact message from the town?
So we typically only post communications other than the newsletter to our specific channels that we edit and control on our own. We don't have any authority over the forum, so we don't post on the forum. We do through councils welcome to.
So, um, would it be possible for Craig or Helen to post, to forward that message from the town or?
Sure, I'll, I'll do that. Man, I think we should use every outlet we have, so I'd be happy to do that.
Good, thank you. Other questions, um, Rebecca?
Uh, no, thanks.
Okay, Mary?
Well, uh, it, it has been received by people. One thing, I'm, that's just a comment.
Right, it's already started, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and what I did was send just the comment we were told, we could say, the one sentence that we were told to say, and just posted that. And that would seem like a good thing to post on the forum if it's okay with the attorney.
Well, we, I mean, we have something that we put, we, the town have put forward.
Right.
We sent it through our town email. We're just gonna, I'll, I will forward that on to the larger, you know, PV forum.
Any other questions, Mary?
Nope.
Okay. Um, so, it, what is the timeframe? If you could repeat, please, the timeframe during which the polling will take place?
So it started just a few days ago, and the goal is to get approximately 200 responses, which is approximately 10% of our registered voters who have phone numbers or emails that are on file. And I believe they've estimated it could take a week or two to reach that response rate.
Okay.
And then the survey would be complete, takes the consultants a few weeks to process the results. And then again, we're targeting November 12th to bring the information back to council. If we receive an update that we can post online before that, we would post it, but I can't give an exact date. Hopefully mid, mid October might be when we can post a brief summary on our webpage for the public to read.
Okay, and the, the polling will take place verbally by telephone. Is there also an, uh, electronic form or not?
Correct, there is an electronic form. And I'll just say that, that might be a quicker process. So the phone, which is, you know, someone actually dictating the questions to you is estimated at 20 to 25 minutes. But if it's a webpage, you might be able to breeze through that faster. And so it will be distributed via text and email and a, a direct phone call.
Okay. Uh, my last question is, um, and we can't, we can't get into details, but it is a scripted poll, right? It's not tell us how you feel about the world. It's the, the polling expert has crafted what he feels is appropriate for this type of, uh, measure, uh, to be informed on it. I, I don't, don't know if you can comment at all what it is and isn't, but it's a series of scripted questions as opposed to a general how are things going poll. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that's correct. I mean, it tries to differentiate feeling, but it's, it's not an open ended, like, how's it going?
Yeah, okay. All right, so that can take less than 25 minutes.
What, just one more clarification, that the responses are entirely confidential. They are not shared with the town. So even though, again, it's entirely a click the answer, there's no, um, open response because the town is using a third party, McGuire Research. The town does not have the results. And again, the responses are entirely confidential and are used for research purposes only. And what we receive is a, an aggregate of all the responses.
Okay, great. All right, um, well, let's go to public comment unless the council has any other questions. We'll go to public comment. Um, are there any hands raised in the schoolhouse, Craig?
There are no hands raised. Well, there are four hands in the audience, but none of them are raised.
There's only four hands? Okay.
There's four, there's four hands, which represents two people who are actually sitting in the audience, but they have their hands, they're, they're raising them now, but they're just giving me hard times. So you're, you're good to go.
All right, so online, we have several hands raised. One is Karen Askey to start. Karen, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Um, a couple of questions. When I heard Darcy say that the phone numbers are coming from voter registration, I realized it's very possible there's a lot of landlines in there. So I just wanted to comment that, um, that could be a difficult process because I think I heard Helen say it comes in a text, so that may not be working so well. But then my bigger questions are really about, um, getting input from other town residents that might not be chosen to participate in the poll. So first of all, can a non-chosen resident comment somehow? And maybe later in the process, when the results are presented, would there be an opportunity for residents to respond? My concern is about transparency and allowing for, um, resident comment. Thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna keep a running list of questions that we can circle back once we hear from others who have their hands raised. So I've got those noted. Um, Ronnie, you're next, Ronnie Krasinski.
Hi, thank you. Um, I actually had pretty much the same comment as Karen. Yeah, I think it would be good if there's a way for people that are not randomly selected to, uh, provide feedback or, you know, fill out a similar survey. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Betsy M., go ahead.
Hi, thanks so much. I, um, I actually was looking forward to being selected and did receive a text yesterday. Um, I, I will, I will say no more, I will say one thing that I learned because I was apparently selected and not selected due to the fact that if you're appointed to the, if you're elected member or appointed to a committee in town, you're not eligible. Um, I had a comment about that because I did a rough count of our 13 committees and, and two commissions, one ad hoc committee, and we have over 95, um, residents. And I eliminated the people who so nobly sign up for more than one committee. We have more than 95 residents who have volunteered, including you five wonderful council members. Um, I understand why the council would be eliminated. I was a little perplexed about, about taking our, we're very proud of our volunteer community. And I was kind of surprised that you, that someone, and it might not have been any of you present tonight, decided that they had some conflict of interest. So perhaps someone can comment about that. And so then I would follow on Karen and Ronnie's question, which is given that people who care deeply about this town um, would not be able to participate randomly, so to speak. Um, thanks very much. I, I look forward to hearing more.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. Uh, Dave Cardinal?
Uh, thanks. Uh, building on, uh, one of the comments earlier about, oh, we should look for texts from 415 or whatever, um, given that essentially zero people, um, other than the council members and four diehards are actually on this call, um, I don't think that's going to get us very far. So, um, at least one of the PV forum posts was like, hey, these McGuire people called me up. Is it spam? No one's going to know who those are. So I think we have to be much more diligent about, vigilant about, you know, click here on the town website, it will explain or something. Because, I don't know, we, we get a call an hour from random people and a text every 30 minutes. And if I got a text from McGuire asking for a survey, I'd probably hang it up. Um, I'd love to be selected. And if anyone cares if I'm not selected, we're going to be paying a lot more taxes to help salvage our town. So that's my input, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Um, so I. Um, so I would like to bring some of these back, uh, for any comment that's appropriate. Now, some of these questions go to, um, the landline one might be easier. Um, is the pollster must be aware that most people are perhaps not using their, their landlines in the same way? Was that factored into the process? Is that something you can comment on?
So when you're dealing with, uh, the voter registration, um, database, now sometimes people put down, put their number in the wrong field, but it does tell you whether it's a mobile phone number. Um, and sometimes people put down their home landline in the mobile field. So they are try, um, my understanding is they are trying to target, uh, mobile phone numbers. And it's based on when you register, if you have voluntarily given that, that cellphone. Um, is my understanding, so.
I also think it's a little broader than that. I think it's public information. I think they could potentially send you an email as well. I think they're, they're just trying to be efficient. The important thing here is it's a sample of the town and it's meant to be a broad cross section. So they're, you know, trying to do some randomization.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
You know, um, there's been, uh, statistically, um, if you follow polling since, you know, since we've gone to cellphones, um, they definitely have, uh, and I think what, what Craig said, um, you know, they really do try to find a cross section. And, um, and our pollster was very, um, specific about the, you know, the numbers that they wanted to access, um, to make sure that we did get a cross section. Um, and that be, is because of the landline problem that pollsters are now facing. Is that, you know, not, you know, many people do not have landlines anymore, particularly, um, the, uh, you know, under 35, for instance, or under 40, I don't, I don't really, I'm not in polling. But, um, so to make sure that we get that cross section, um, they do try to use different, uh, data points. So, thank you.
So summarizing, they, they have a process that factors in that the, the, the modern approach to cellphones versus landlines. We don't know what that is though, because it's their, their methodology, not a public methodology. Is that right?
I mean, there's a, yes, there's a reason you hire a professional polling group. They have experience doing this.
Yep, okay. Now, and this I think might be a related point, which is there's a methodology that you're hiring the experts to do. But, um, what about the input if you're not chosen? And does it skew, I'm paraphrasing here, does it skew the results if 95 people who know the town very well and volunteer are not included in the pool of people from whom responses are taken? Did you, i- is there anything you can comment on there?
Well, so I was gonna follow up on the volunteer piece of it. Um, I can understand the commissions. Um, I was surprised to hear about the committees. That wasn't something that I understood. So I think we can follow up on that.
Okay.
And, and see, so, but I would say TBD, at least from my point of view.
Yeah, um, I mean, again, I think that their methodology is based on cities and towns that do not have our volunteer structure. And so I agree with council member or vice mayor, or vice mayor, excuse me, um, uh, about following up, but my guess is, is that those folks might be, you know, ruled out because of potential knowledge and bias, is my guess. So, um, so that's my guess, but if staff, the staff want to weigh in at all on that.
We're gonna look into this. I will say that the pollster wanted to design a very stratified sample of input in a, I think they were just cautious because they're in our town, right? So again, they're aiming for, they're, they're about 2,100 individuals, voters who we have email or phone numbers for, mostly mobile, is what he said. And then they want to reach, get input from 10% of those. And so if we have over a hundred potential volunteers on committees, maybe a little bit less, it, depending on how they run the sample, the stratification, it could skew the results.
We'll, we'll, we'll follow up on that one.
Yep.
And there was one other one I wanted to follow up that Karen, Karen asked about, you know, can residents comment? And, and I think the appropriate time is this will come back to the council. This will be on the agenda and that would be the appropriate time for residents that aren't part of the survey to comment.
Yeah, okay.
Can I also?
Yes.
Say something, because I also thought, and maybe I misheard, but about non-residents weighing in? But maybe I misheard.
I didn't hear that.
Saying if you, if you didn't get selected as a survey participant, could you still participate as a non-survey, not a non-resident?
Okay, because, right, because, because it's a taxation issue, we cannot have, uh, non-residents, is what I just wanted to say.
Sure. The last point was raised, and it's a question or, or kind of a suggestion embedded in a question, which is if people are getting texts that they think are spam, is it possible for the pollster to include in their, in their invitation to participate, a link to the town website where the town can be saying, hey, this is a thing. This is valid. And I, I can leave that to you to explore as appropriate. But, um, if there is confusion out there, that might be a thread of thought worth looking at. Okay, if there's no more questions, then any discussion that the?
I, I had one question and.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't know whether, you can tell me it's not appropriate, but I have been asked how much it's costing us and how the process of it being, uh, uh, at, at the process of being approved. But just by, uh, by other people, and I was not a hundred percent clear when I went over the minutes.
Um, we approve 30,000 for the poll, is that right? And I think, I mean, and 40, if I remember, something around 40,000 for the campaign consultant. But maybe staff can be more specific.
Yeah, so the poll at 25 minutes is costing three, $33,200. But I want to emphasize that does include robust analysis of the results and presentations and briefing materials. And then the, um, communications consultant is a different price and that's monthly.
Right, and this is something that we discussed at a council meeting and approved. The actual contracts are being signed by the town manager, but we, the council, basically gave the town manager direction to follow this. And we created a subcommittee to basically work with the consultants.
Mark Commander brought us the contacts.
Yep. And if I recall correctly, one of them was an up to number, right? Because we weren't sure how many hours, um, the non-God be, uh, consultant Lou would need. And if it goes over, we have to bring it back before they continue.
Right, well, it's under a town manager signing authority, so that's the limit. And, and it will come back, exactly right, but.
Right.
Mary, Mary, you're, there's a little bit of other conversation here that's not on the mic, but Mary was asking, she said she don't remember these numbers, and that's because we, the council, gave town manager direction to sign these contracts. We didn't deal with the contracts directly as a council.
Correct. Okay? All right, um, so, uh, just finishing off with any discussion. Mary, do you want to go first if you have any comments or, or discussion items?
Just, I'm excited to get this done and, uh, I think we need to do what everybody's doing, which is saying it's a great idea and we've got to get it done. We've got to spend this money and get it done.
Okay. All right, Rebecca?
I think it'll be really useful to get, um, sort of a, an anonymous, um, cross section of the community's views on what's important to them. And, um, and about the towns, that we understand their, um, views. I wanted to also add that I'm very impressed with the quality and the professionalism of the pollster and the, um, consultant based on just the small pieces that I've seen of their work. Thanks.
Okay. And I'm, I'm, Craig and Helen, do you have any discussion items?
I do not.
Okay, all right. I think it's great to see this getting kicked off. The, this type of polling is, uh, you know, more statistically designed to, to yield certain contacts that we come back to the council with, is my recollection, and have a more fulsome discussion. And the public will have an opportunity to weigh in. But this, this polling is a really important cornerstone of getting accurate information, regarding what our, what our likely paths might be. So I, I'm excited to see this. Thank you for the time you spent, um, on the subcommittee and thanks to staff for, for supporting this. It's, it's going to be really important moving forward. And I'm looking forward to, if it's November, the November timeframe, uh, to hear more about this. All right, um, I think that closes off our regular agenda. Any, there were several liaison and, and, uh, committee reports submitted in the packet. Uh, before we go to public comment on those, are there any additional liaison reports that anyone wants to make verbally?
I, I just wanted to make a tiny correction for the geological safety committee notes. It, it said the passive house standard required a steel shell, and I just wanted to say that it does not.
Okay. Catherine, what's the right process for making that correction? Do we just note it in the next minutes or do we go back and correct the packet?
I would suggest noting it in the minutes would, um, although frankly, it wouldn't hurt to do both.
Yeah.
Can you do that again, Rebecca? It seems it was my, um, my.
It, it just, you just had a thing saying passive house standard, um, open parentheses, tight air sealed construction, comma, steel shell, in, in parentheses, and it just shouldn't say steel shell. There's no requirement for steel shell.
Yeah. So Darcy and Veronica, can you work to do that in both places?
Yes, yes, we can do that.
Great. Any other verbal reports?
All right, I have a question.
Yep.
Rain barrels. All the way, only in Daly City and Half Moon Bay?
That was the information they provided at the meeting. They didn't provide any details whatsoever. And they said the next meeting they were gonna provide more details or they would send something out.
Okay.
You're not even aware, I guess, in Half Moon Bay.
Well, coast side water is a different agency.
Oh.
You know, our fragmented system. Um, but, uh, it would be great if we had something in South San Mateo County, just saying.
Like a C-CAG.
Had rain barrel programs.
I know, so they're usually, it's very early to start seeing these type of rebates and these type of programs. So, and many, um, so that they are coming up, um, is interesting to me. So, but I would, um, ask hopefully that we get some programs. Um, obviously we have Cal Water, a different water provider. I don't know who Daly City uses, so that, that would be interesting.
Just through C-CAG.
Right, I know, but usually they go through their water provider. So, um, so if you can get more information in lobby for South San Mateo rain barrels, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna see if there's any public comment. Are the four hands in the schoolhouse raised? Or are they last even now?
There are zero hands in the audience.
All right, there's one online, Rita Gomez, feel free to go.
Hi, thank you for taking my suggestion. Uh, so I really enjoy these written reports that wind up in the packet. If, uh, if we could be sensitive to acronyms, uh, so that it could be read by whomever is, um, is, is reading it. I, you know, I'm sure more than just me would appreciate it. Thank you very much for all that you do.
Okay, thank you, Rita. All right, I think that leaves us for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, um, do we actually have to do a roll call on that?
Second voice, oh goodness, you're, yeah, yes.
I, I said you did, so why don't you go ahead and take a roll call?
Councilmember Walter.
Hi.
Councilmember Hefty.
Hi.
Councilmember Flynn.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Haskell. Hi. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. All right, bye.